We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 27th. Do you have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Chalamchela?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Hal?
Here, if you'll join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have additional information for items four, eight, 10, and 11 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been provided to you earlier, and they are also available to the public on the table in the back.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from business from the floor?
You have no request to speak this evening under business from the floor.
Just in case, this is your opportunity to speak to us about anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to come up in business from the floor? Seeing no one rushing forward, we will move on to scheduled presentations.
Okay, your first scheduled presentation item this evening is the US-50 Empire Ranch Road Interchange Project Update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mark Rackavan, Public Works Director. This evening, Ryan Chance, our senior civil engineer, will give you an update on the Empire Ranch Road Interchange Project. You may recall back in 2021, we were successfully awarded a $2.5 million grant from SECOG to assist us towards the final design of that interchange. So Ryan's going to give you an update on where we stand in the approval process with Caltrans and an idea of our schedule looking ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. For those that don't know me, my name is Ryan Chance, senior civil engineer in the Public Works Department. Like, excited to give you guys a presentation on the Empire Ranch Interchange. We're excited to be moving forward with it after so many years of sitting idle due to funding. So, you know, it's been a long planned, very important project for not only Folsom but for the region. You know, anybody that travels into Folsom to do shopping from Eldorado County is surely going to be excited to have this interchange. And it's going to be also a nice connection from the north side of Folsom to the south side of Folsom. Just one more connection point to unify our city. Excuse me. So our presentation is going to just, we're going to go a brief overview of the project, the history of the project, different alternatives that we considered throughout the preliminary design phase. The preferred alternative, show you some pictures of that, our project cost estimates and status and schedule, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have after that. So just to kind of recognize our project team, I wanted to let you know that we have Dennis Haglin with Dewberry Consultants with us tonight, who's been working on the project approval and environmental document for the project since 2018. We contracted with Dewberry, formerly Drake Haglin. So we're happy to have him here tonight, especially me, in case you guys have any real technical questions about some of the engineering that I may not know about. A few other, you know, consultants on the project team and obviously community partners and stakeholders. And like I said, it's really going to be a benefit for the whole region as well as Folsom. So the project overview is obviously to build a new interchange, pretty much in between East Bidwell Street and Latrobe Road. It's going to provide four new connections. So you're going to have eastbound, westbound, on and off ramps, all directions. We're going to construct auxiliary lanes. And for anybody who doesn't know what an auxiliary lane is, it's an extra lane on the freeway that allows vehicles to not have to merge as soon as they get on acceleration, deceleration lane. Helps with traffic flow and just you don't have a lot of those merging problems that you have when you have to get on or off at a certain point. So the project history, it's been around for a while. It was added to the general plan in 1993. In 2007, the city conducted its first project report and environmental assessment and submitted that to Caltrans. The environmental portion was approved, and for some reason, the project report was never reviewed or approved for unknown reasons. It was put on the shelf primarily for funding purposes, lack of funding, I should say. I'm sure some of you may have more history on that than I do. So in 2012, obviously, we annexed a bunch of properties south of 50. And in 2018, we received some funding to kind of kickstart the project again, redo the draft project report, kind of update the environmental bit and get it submitted back into Caltrans. So currently, we've submitted back to Caltrans the draft project report. They've reviewed it, got comments back. We were hoping to have final comments back after our recent middle by tonight, but we haven't got them yet. So don't have that to share with you, but we're expecting those at least next couple of weeks back from Caltrans. So we can, at that point, we'll recirculate the environmental document, which is basically public input, and get that going back through Caltrans as well for final approval, which will trigger our ability to go into design. So at that point, we're, now we're moving forward. You know, we're going into design phase for this project, which is what we have to do to finally get to construction. So here's our alternatives that we've considered. Top left, you have your standard L9 interchange, which is pretty much what East Bidwell and US-50 is. Top right, we have a diverging diamond, which is confusing to me as well, probably to you. Bottom left is what we chose. That's our preferred, you know, option. It's some roundabouts. It's basically an L9 modified with roundabouts. And then bottom right, we have a single-point urban interchange, which again is beyond my knowledge level, so I'm going to refrain from talking about that. But the next slide here, so here's our preferred alternative. This was chosen primarily because it has a smaller structure that goes over the freeway, so reduce cost. And the roundabouts really do provide a great level of service for traffic, not only for the interchange here, but for, you know, the Iron Point Empire Ranch Interchange, the Latrobe and East Bidwell. These roundabouts really handle traffic well. So this is our preferred alternative that we went ahead with in the project report submitted to Caltrans. And obviously, when you have better level of service, you have reduced congestion and improved levels of service. So there's a closer look at it. I figured everybody would want to get a look at what it looks like, try to envision yourself driving through it. They are graded, but they're separated so that there's no bicycles or pedestrians in the actual roundabout. So they will be at grade crossings at all the on and off ramps. But as you can see, it's, you have good visibility, you have good short distances for pedestrians to cross, and you don't have pedestrians and bikes riding around the roundabout with cars. As you can see, roundabouts are the hot topic lately. Thirty-seven percent less collisions and 90% less fatalities. So the concept is they, you know, you have some curves before them, it helps slow down traffic and provides a... I think the interesting thing with this is you'll notice, you know, let's say you're going northbound and you want to go westbound 50, you can either take the loop on ramp or continue around the roundabout and take the diagonal on ramp. So you have two alternatives. So when you have like a heavy flow in the morning or afternoon, there's options for people to get on the freeway at different points.
Does he have, do you have a pointer there where you can kind of, so that somebody, okay, just give us like an example, so?
Okay, so if you're driving northbound here, sorry, if you're driving northbound, you could take this ramp, which is a loop, which puts you on westbound 50.
And what roadway is that, Ryan, on the south of the freeway?
What road is it?
Yeah.
Empire Ranch on the south as well, I believe.
Okay.
Unless they called it something else.
I, I don't know that it is called Empire Ranch on the south, it is?
Is it?
Yeah, it's Empire Ranch both north and south of the freeway.
Okay, thank you for not changing the name, that drives me crazy.
So, okay, so back again, you could take this loop on ramp to go westbound 50. Or if that was backed up for some reason, you could come around here and take that directional ramp onto westbound 50. So it gives you a couple more options. I mean, just in theory, you would think it's got twice the capacity.
Until you install the rim meters.
And if you're going eastbound on the freeway and you get off there, then you go around the roundabout if you want to go south of the freeway?
Yeah, yeah, so if you're headed eastbound?
Yeah.
You get off the ramp, and if you want to go south, well, you could take either of these lanes here. You come around and head southbound.
Got it.
And so the southern roundabout is a mirror image. I have a picture of it as well, but it's literally the same thing. These are really popular designs. As you know, we're looking at roundabouts a lot of different places in Folsom. So, so there's the southern one, same basic concept. We have a couple artist renderings, which I really like. This is looking at the interchange from Iron Point Road, the Iron Point Road Empire Ranch intersection. It's, there's not much to it, but it's, I think it's a good-looking graphic. A lot goes into building these. So here's a view from 50 westbound, from 50 looking westbound. Bridge there. Dewberry did a great job with this graphic. You can really visualize the off ramps and on ramps. You got your loop ramp there, headed eastbound. About 50 looking eastbound, see the sierras in the background? This is a little more zoomed in, so you can see the bridge. Okay. Our project costs, you know, I mean, we're early in the, we're early in the design, or I should say pre-designed. So our numbers are, you know, somewhat estimated at this point until we really get down to, you know, the nuts and bolts of what everything's going to take. But, so these are our project costs. The current cost estimate was put together at the time that PAED, Project Approval Environmental Document, were put together. The escalated cost estimate is what it's actually going to be at the time of construction. Is that true, Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, with everything going on in the economy, maybe it's not going to be that high escalated in a couple of years. But those...
Or maybe it's worse.
Or maybe, yeah.
The current cost estimate was from 2007?
No, no, sir, no. That's 2018.
2018.
No, 2007, the total project cost was about $50 million.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so 2018 is the current, and the escalated cost estimate is to what?
2025.
Twenty-five, okay, thank you.
Which would be an ideal case scenario to have this under construction, which it's doable pending funding.
Yep.
Which, you know, we're, so currently, we have set aside for this project, we have $2.5 million from SECOG, and we have $4 million from the Empire Ranch CFD-10, and we have $3 million from the Folsom Plan Area Construction.
So far, is there more going, more coming in from that? Mark's shaking, he said yes.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, sorry, I thought I heard somebody starting to ask a question.
No, you heard the wind from Mark doing this.
So yeah, ultimately, the Folsom Plan Area is going to provide about $20 million towards the project. And, you know, obviously, with Measure A coming up on the ballot in November, that would provide us another $25 million towards construction, which would be a huge benefit for this project. Anything remaining after that would have to be, come from other federal funding, other SECOG funds, which we are always on the look for and always talking with our representatives at SECOG and to find out what's available out there for these types of projects. This is a great regional project. I'm sure it would qualify for many different funding types. Any questions on the funding there?
Ryan, just for clarification, Measure A is, once it passes $25 million, if not, there is, right?
Correct, yes, you're right.
Otherwise, at least the committed dollars are Folsom Plan Area. Hopefully, we are going to build, it is in Folsom's control, right? About up to $20 million max. And we have already cash on hand, $4 million from Empire. So it's...
Yeah, plus $2.5 million from SECOG.
SECOG.
Yeah, so six and a half in our wallets, I guess.
Exactly.
Just $110 million to go.
I know. Okay, oh, that's good. For clarification, we want to make sure, right? And we are aiming to finish this by 2025, that's what our goal is.
Just start it by 2025.
Start construction, sir, yeah. It's going to take a couple of years for the design process. You know, we have Caltrans oversight, so we have to, a lot of submittals with them. There's a lot of public outreach, environmental, right-of-way utilities and right-of-way acquisitions.
Yeah.
There's a long process through the design stage before you actually break ground, yeah.
Yeah, if I may interject, one possibility, and maybe Ryan was about to say this, but one possibility is that we may have to deliver the interchange in phases. And one potential initial phase would be to build the overpass and the roundabouts so that we have the cross freeway connectivity and then possibly just adding one ramp in each direction. That could be a very functional first phase. It could provide some traffic relief for East Bidwell Street, still provide our cross freeway connectivity for both vehicles and bikes and peds. And then we'll work on the rest of the funding over the course of time and maybe have to do the rest of the interchange and the auxiliary lanes as future phases. That's one concept we'll have to look at.
And my suggestion would be that we do this, do the portion of the intersection north of the freeway that gels Eldorado Hills traffic, Broadstone traffic off of Iron Point and East Bidwell. And maybe looking into the future, that lane, that third turn lane that we're putting in, it can go back to being a regular lane once this gets built.
Yeah, I think the idea with the first phase would be, in addition to the overpass, to build the westbound on ramp, which is the one you're referring to.
Yeah.
And then the eastbound off ramp, which then, again, provides some relief for East Bidwell Corridor and the access to the Folsom Plan Area.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, thank you, Mark. So the status, I think we've touched on it, but we've, you know, we've recently submitted, we've got comments back. There weren't, there were expected comments, nothing really revolutionary, no project killer comments. So we've resubmitted all those based on the revised. And the environmental was actually approved in 2007, as I mentioned. So all we had to do was resubmit a couple modified documents for it, and that's been great. So you don't really run into those types of situations often, so that was, that was nice. So yeah, so you can see a rough schedule. I mean, that's obviously, if everything goes well, we get funding. I mean, we'd definitely love to get this thing under design and going, because like I said, it's it's typically about two-year process.
Ryan, who currently owns the right-of-way that we have to acquire?
A few different people, so, and I don't know the names off the top of my head, but I know there's a parcel on the southeast corner, I believe, that's owned by, I believe, property owner south of 50 there.
I think that's Elliot.
Yeah. I'm not 100% sure, I don't really want to say, and then there's slivers here and there.
Yeah, I doubt there'll be a problem south of the freeway, but my concern would be north.
Yeah, north, it looked like Folsom owns most of that. Dennis, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but...
Madam Mayor, council members, Dennis Haglin with Dewberry. Yeah, there is a private property owner north that we're going to have to acquire right-of-way from. So there's also north, south, and then Caltrans owns quite a bit of right-of-way on each side of the freeway that we'll be acquiring as well. I think the right-of-way, well, you can see up there, was about $6 million altogether.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why would we acquire right-of-way from Caltrans to build a freeway interchange?
Ideally, we would, they would just give it to us without us having to pay for it.
Well, notwithstanding the actual cost, why would we have to acquire it at all?
Well, federal dollars are involved. And so once federal dollars get involved, you have to do the appraisal and you have to offer, make the offer. Now, if it's a private property owner, or Caltrans will not, by the way, probably negotiate much, but people can deny the offer and just dedicate the property to you. Caltrans typically will take the money.
Can we get Will Kempton to be our negotiator on that one?
We're building an improvement for them, what I don't understand.
You know, we do have some negotiating power because we're building those auxiliary lanes, and they really want that, and we really need it, so we will certainly negotiate that.
They won't accept improvements on their owned property?
They might. We will try, for sure. I'm just telling you, history, as far as history goes, Caltrans doesn't always agree to just dedicate it to you to give you the land.
So where's the typical boundary, then? So like for East Bidwell, what does the city own and what does Caltrans own? They have a straight shot going under the bridge for the main lanes, or?
No, Caltrans owns up to, on East Bidwell, up to roughly in and out area? Maybe a little, maybe a little bit less than that.
Uh-huh.
They also own the bridge.
Yeah.
And we...
And all of the traffic controllers, as we know, the last time those went out on a holiday weekend.
And the irrigation controllers recently. And so we maintain the pavement and the striping throughout there.
Right.
We have maintenance agreements for different things, but yeah, the Caltrans owns all that. And I'm glad you asked that question, because I thought the same thing when I was reviewing the right-of-way portion of this. It does make sense to pay for something that they're going to enjoy in improvement in their right-of-way, so.
Yeah, sometimes Caltrans doesn't necessarily think of interchanges as a benefit as much of an additional impediment to the flow of traffic on their freeway. But that's kind of an editorial comment from past experience.
All right, thank you.
Well, this is not my last time coming here, so we will talk about this further, I'm sure.
I can't wait to hear about Oak Avenue.
Oak Avenue?
For another day.
I was going to say, what part of Oak Avenue, but now I know what you're talking about.
The interchange. Any other questions for Ryan?
Thank you very much, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
What's the estimate, estimate time of construction, once we get to that phase?
It would likely be two years.
I'm going to go year and a half.
Dennis agrees with me, so, about two years, year and a half, I mean, you know.
I'll take the over.
It depends on the contractor you get and the incentive that they have to move quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, construction is always the fastest part of any project. It's the approvals and the advanced paperwork that seems to take longer.
Except for back in the day when C.C. Myers was building stuff and collecting huge bonuses because he could rebuild things in a month.
Yeah, well, hey, if, you know, if we could provide incentives to our contractors, we can get the same kind of service. All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, scheduled presentation number two.
Your second scheduled presentation item this evening is the East Bidwell, Iron Point, and US-50 Improvement Project Update.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mark Rackavan. So in addition to the grant application and funding that we received for Empire Ranch Interchange in 2021, we also received a $4.5 million SECOG grant for improvements to the East Bidwell-Iron Point intersection and associated with that, some improvements to the westbound on ramp at the East Bidwell-US-50 interchange. Zach Bosch, our senior civil engineer in our traffic division, is going to give you an update on that project and some interesting changes to the scope.
Just for fun, do we know what time of day that photo was taken? Was that in the morning or the afternoon?
I'm going to guess the afternoon because of the southbound traffic on East Bidwell. That's our PM peak, yeah.
I was going to say that, but nobody's coming out of Costco.
The shadows, it's, yeah, it's about 2:00 in the afternoon in the fall.
Backed up to, was that Via Felice there?
Yeah.
So, yeah, good catch on that, so. Thank you, Mark, for the introduction, Zach Bosch, Public Works. I'm here tonight to present an update with the East Bidwell-Iron Point-US-50 On Ramp Improvement Project. As many of you know, East Bidwell and Iron Point is one of our most congested intersections in the city of Folsom. On most days, it will facilitate over 56,000 vehicles, 50 bicycles, and over 100 pedestrians trying to navigate that intersection. With that amount of traffic, it's a delicate science to balance the demands of all the directions of traffic for here, for safe and convenient passage. And obviously, with the restrictions on right-of-way and the high cost of construction widening intersections, it's not entirely feasible all of the time. So we're constantly looking forward and trying to find new and innovative ways to modify intersections, reduce congestion in the most cost-effective manner. Tonight, I'll provide you an update on this project, explain how we landed on our current design, walk you through some of the specifics, the specific improvements that we'll see from Cavett on to US-50 Westbound On Ramp, and explain how, based on our relationship with Caltrans, we were able to save a substantial amount of money in which we reallocated that fund to a different project, so. Little bit of history, back in 2020, we submitted an application through SECOG, through their regional funding program. The grant identified poor levels of service and congestion in the intersection, especially the left turns coming down from Costco and was a Lifetime Fitness up there. So the city was awarded a grant and $4.5 million, like Mark mentioned. And during those early consultations with Caltrans, prior to the grant application, it was determined that the westbound US-50 on ramp would need to be widened to accommodate the improvements that we had proposed through the grant. So that would widen the existing on ramp from a one HOV lane and one general purpose lane to one HOV lane and two general purpose lanes. So I'll come back to that more later in the presentation. So existing conditions, I'm sure everyone's well aware. We have three through lanes coming down, Iron Point, that's westbound, two left turn lanes. Those pockets are about 235, 240 feet long. We serve about, between 550, 650 vehicles per hour in the peak hour. And so those, that peak hour is equivalent, well, I'm sorry, equal on the weekends, Saturday, about noon to 1:00 p.m., as well as midweek PM peak. We serve about the same amount of vehicles turning left there. As we've all experienced, it routinely backs up from the intersection, past the pocket left, into the through lane, and routinely backs up to Cavett Drive. And so we experience a lot of driver frustration. We say a lot of things out there at the intersection with people merging late into the left turn pockets, you know, running red lights because they, they're either frustrated or they're just unfamiliar with the intersection, and so causes quite a safety issue out there. During our preliminary study, we found that about a third of all vehicles in that outside most left turn lane were traveling to westbound US-50. So 37% of all the traffic in that lane was going westbound, and a significant portion of the remainder was traveling south on to the eastbound US-50 on ramp. And a quick note here at the bottom, the restriction of the U-turn and the no, and the right turn overlap actually improved our level of service. When that was implemented, it went from a level of service E down to a level of service D. So that's kind of our baseline for...
I'm sorry, did you say it went from D to B?
Oh, no, no, I wish.
That's what I thought you heard.
Can you imagine? Yeah, so that was a, from a D, E to a D.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. It went, improved from an E.
We never should have allowed that U-turn in the first place. I said that when In-N-Out got approved.
Well, it works great now, that.
Thank you.
That queue on eastbound Iron Point is significantly reduced. So proposed project, so I'll kind of walk you through the improvements we have planned on the, on the project here. First is that Cavett Drive and Iron Point. Currently, it's striped so that the inside left turn lane actually goes into the number one lane on Iron Point, traveling down the hill. We're going to modify that to allow people in that left-hand turn lane to either go into the number one lane or the number two lane. So that would create a situation where those people in that turn lane would not be trapped into the improvements at Iron Point Road. That number one lane will transition into a, a left turn only lane soon after that, that intersection. So we wanted to create the, the opportunity for people to choose either to travel through East Bidwell-Iron Point or choose to stay in that left turn lane at Iron Point.
And just to confirm, lane, lane one is the one that's on the left, correct?
Sorry, I get a little caught up in years of traffic engineering, but yeah. It's the innermost lane is number one, and then you count outwards towards the sidewalk area.
Hey, Zach, could you use your pointer and kind of show that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thanks. So your number one left-hand turn lane here will, will actually be able to choose whether to stay in that number one through, or the left turn lane, or go into the number two lane, which will continue through the intersection. So that's just an option we want to provide those people. Secondarily, we, we are going to add signage and striping somewhere near this area to indicate that this number one lane will transition into a left turn only pocket, that third left-hand turn lane. We'll be adding some signage and some striping to make sure that people who are coming down the hill on Iron Point or turning left from Cavett will, will very clearly understand that if you're in that first lane, that takes you to the intersection and you are turning left from there. So we, we give them plenty of distance to, to move over if they need to. But it's important to give people at least a few hundred feet of heads up before you get to the intersection. Third, this is where we're going to add that additional left-hand turn lane coming down the hill, Iron Point, onto East Bidwell. So some improvements here that we foresee are some additional striping on the ground, some pavement legends indicating which lane is going on to which direction of traffic on US 50, so that number three left-hand turn pocket will become a de facto westbound 50 On-Ramp only lane. So we'll indicate that with a legend on the pavement. The middle lane will have the option of either transitioning onto westbound 50.
So it'll be similar to what we already have north of Iron Point Road?
Yeah, but we are going to modify that to, to correct something that's.
Okay.
Will fit better with this project once it's installed. And so like Mayor Howell was saying, the, the number three lane, southbound, or yeah, southbound, East Bidwell, that will become a US 50 westbound On-Ramp only lane, so we will sign it and stripe it accordingly. The middle lane will have the option, again, of going westbound or continuing south to either eastbound 50 or continuing down south over the freeway. In between Iron Point and US 50, this is where the striping on East Bidwell will indicate that the number three lane will have to merge onto the freeway and the middle lane will have the option of, of going onto the freeway or continuing south. And finally, the On-Ramp improvements to westbound US 50. Currently, as I stated before, we have one general purpose metered lane and one HOV lane. This project will transition the HOV lane into a general purpose metered lane through the Caltrans policy exemption procedure. And so we're working with them to get that done. So benefits of the project, I'm sure this is, is why we do the project here. So obviously, this is based on some modeling from our consultants, but we were able to show through, through their software that the westbound left-hand turn lane queue is significantly reduced. So we were able, now we're able to fit all three lanes and their queue in the PM peak and the weekend peak within the existing turn pocket length. So that, obviously, that's a significant improvement from, from what we had before and it will require no modifications to the existing median because now we have the available capacity within those three lanes. Secondarily, we're, we're able to reduce the queue from northbound East Bidwell by about 75 feet in the PM peak. And this is done through traffic signal optimization. So we're going to spend less time serving that left-hand turn lane, so it'll be more available for the, for the dominant movement, which will be the north-south East Bidwell. So we're going to allocate more time to that. The project's going to improve the level of service from its existing D to a level C. So we were actually going from 38 seconds of delay down to 33 seconds of delay in the AM peak. But surprisingly, the PM peak actually increased by three seconds. And that's through the modeling software, so we're, we're obviously going to keep an, keep a close eye on that. But the, the real improvement was the westbound delay. The, the westbound delay goes from an average of 50 seconds per car in the peak hour down to 38 seconds of, of delay. And that's a, that's a significant reduction, 24%. Delay reduction is, is very, it's, it's a very good improvement. So as, as I've mentioned here, most of this is signing and striping for this project. So our original, originally conceived project where we had to modify the On-Ramp to westbound US 50, much of that cost was the physical improvements of adding that additional On-Ramp lane. So with the policy exemption with Caltrans in place, when we receive it, this turns into more of a striping project, a signing and striping project. So that, we're, we're savings an estimated $4 million or something in that ballpark. When we get to, with the project, we'll have a better understanding, but you know, a lot of that cost savings actually goes to the design of Empire Ranch Interchange. So we're, we're taking savings that the city of Folsom captured through the grant project and we're transferring it over to the design of Empire Ranch Interchange. So the money through the grant stays in Folsom, just gets reallocated. Current status, we're in the PSNE phase. We're working with multiple divisions within a Caltrans, obviously, right? We have traffic safety, freeway operations, we have electrical, we have encroachment. We have those four big departments that we've got to work through to get this project deliverable. So we're working through each one of those divisions to make sure that they are included in the process and they don't feel blindsided by this project when it comes across their desk. So we've actually reached out to them and made sure they're included in the process. They get their preferred design included in, in our PSNE package.
What is PSNE?
I'm sorry, it's a plan, spec, and estimate. It's the, it's the construction documents that we go out with. As I mentioned before, we're working with Caltrans to do the policy exemption, the ramp metering policy exemption. We've had a great relationship with Caltrans through the process. They're fully on board with the policy, policy exemption up to this point and we don't foresee any issues with them granting this to us.
Had we bought the property from them, would we have less oversight? Oh, you think I'm joking?
Yeah, it's a great question. So obviously, we have, we have a few more, I don't know, submittals to Caltrans to work through before we confirm up our delivery date of our, our, our construction documents.
So hopefully, this is going to be spring of next year, starting?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we get everything in place that we want to, we, we could hit that target date. The only hiccup that, that we foresee right now is District Three Traffic Maintenance has a standard that is not approved by headquarters for their, for their rotating metering heads. So they want the rotating heads so they can pull it away from traffic and do the maintenance of this, of the lights. It's not a headquarters-approved design. So if we can talk them off of that and get them to install headquarters-approved traffic signal metering.
I can't believe that the district is not in accordance with what headquarters wants them to do.
Yeah, yeah. So every project that District Three proposes has to go through headquarters for.
Where headquarters is located.
Yeah, yep, yep. This is the joy of working with, with Caltrans, although they have been great.
Caltrans District Three, not Folsom District Three.
Caltrans District Three.
Thank you. All right, I do have one other question.
All of our districts are great.
I have another question regarding the, the metering of the On-Ramp. What, what is the real purpose of metering both On-Ramp lanes rather than one?
So Caltrans' policy is to implement metering on general purpose lanes from, from all new construction.
So why are we, what, what is the benefit of converting the HOV to a general purpose lane? Are we getting, are we getting backups from the meter currently?
No, we, we have plenty of capacity within the, the On-Ramp. The, the benefit of us metering the H, or converting the HOV lane to a general purpose metered lane is to construct this project for, you know, about $650,000 instead of $5.1 million.
Meaning Caltrans wouldn't approve this under other circumstances unless we added a general purpose lane, entrance lane?
Yeah, under the circumstances that they told us in the pre-application for the grant, they determined that a two-plus-one situation was required here. So it's a two general purpose and one HOV. So using the policy exemption, we're able to.
Do two general purpose lanes.
Two general purpose with no HOV.
I see.
And we just have, and their, their policy is to meter the general purpose lane.
It's a gift, just take it.
Okay.
So.
I, I get it.
Yeah, no, yeah. And, and to speak to that point, this, you know, this, these improvements at this intersection and this On-Ramp, they're, they're striping changes, they're signing changes, there's, there's very minimal physical, civil work to do this. So the assumption is that when Empire Ranch Road interchange or when East Bidwell interchange is redesigned and constructed, that these improvements will no longer be necessary and we can convert them back again for a minimal cost. And that's my presentation.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could we just please make sure that both of these, both Ryan and Zach's PowerPoints get added to the website for the?
Those are always added Wednesday morning.
So they'll be up.
And with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Anybody have anything they want to pull?
I'll pull number four.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I'll move items three, five, six, and seven.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
And I will pull four to abstain.
Actually, I think you need to, is it abstention or recusal?
To recuse, but she will abstain from voting.
Okay, so I will move item four.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
That moves us to old business item eight.
Your old business item eight is Resolution Number 10922, a resolution rescinding the approval of project number 19-182, which was Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematorium CUP and mitigated neg deck.
Thank you. Josh Kincaid, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, I just have a short presentation for you. The council is familiar with the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematorium project. The project applicant has now requested that the city council rescind the conditional use permit and the initial study and mitigated negative declaration that were approved as part of the settlement agreement in this matter. The settlement terms do not negatively affect future city review for the project, meaning that the, that rescinding these approvals does not prohibit the project applicant from resubmitting the project for consideration in the future. The applicant has agreed to prepare an environmental impact report if they elect to resubmit at this location. So with that, we do recommend that council approve the applicant's request to rescind the approvals. Thank you.
We have one request to speak on this.
Yeah, one request to speak is from Terry Sorensen. Terry, if you want, come on down. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 10922.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Moving on to item nine.
Okay, items nine and 10 are under the heading of the Historic District Residential Permit Parking Program. Item number nine is ordinance number 1331, an ordinance adding sections to the Folsom Municipal Code to establish a residential permit parking program in designated areas of the historic district. This will be second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Mark Rackevan, Public Works Director. I believe this item should be fairly straightforward. The original ordinance was introduced to you last month. Subsequent to that introduction, it was noted that there were some wayward brackets in one section of the ordinance that needed to be deleted. And then on September 12th, I attended the Historic Folsom Residents Association meeting and one of their members requested that under Section 102290 subsection C that bicycles not be subject to requiring a permit for the, the permit parking. It seems like a reasonable request and so if it meets with the council's approval, we would delete the brackets and delete the word bicycle from the document and that would be the, the final form of the ordinance. And that's all I have for you on that item. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, but, but the staff report still includes bicycles? Is that in the change that we got tonight?
Yeah, it, it was noted in the narrative in the staff report that this was received on September 12th and that we have no objections to removal of that word.
Okay.
And Mark, just for clarification, this is just referencing ordinance 1331?
Correct, this is just for the authorizing ordinance, this is not for the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I do want to make a comment. I don't know, this or the next one, but just that I, I hope that maybe, you know, a year or two, whatever, that we kind of put this on our calendar to just kind of bring it back to the council to review. And, you know, how's it going? Is it working the way that we intended? I actually got, I was contacted by one of my neighbors a couple of weeks ago. As many of you know, I live in the neighborhood across from Vista and a couple of years ago, one of the neighbors pursued us getting restricted parking, right? We're during the school day, we are limited to like two or three hours of parking, I think. And it applies to residents, students, guests, everybody alike. And this, this neighbor reached out to me because her adult daughter, who does not live at home but had come to visit for a few days, got a parking ticket because she was on the, the street for a couple of hours. And so the neighbor said, how can I get one of those permits that my friend is getting in the historic district? And so I kind of had to explain, well, that's kind of a different type of parking issue and, you know, permit, you know, and we don't have permits here, you know? And so I, I just, there may be more of that. Maybe that's just a one-off, but maybe, maybe we'll get more of that. And so I just think that we, you know, let's just, let's make, make sure that we're monitoring this and that this comes back in a couple of years and we say, okay, did this achieve what we wanted it to achieve? Or has it opened a can of worms and now everybody in the city wants permit parking?
Do we, do we still have that issue or do we still have those signs over by Folsom High on Grover?
It's an identical situation over at Folsom High School, timely parking during school days in the residential areas around the high school.
And did this happen during the school year when the kids were around?
Yes, it was just a couple of weeks ago, I think, a couple of months, yeah.
You can definitely plan, you know, an annual or a biannual, you know, check-in for sure.
No, I, I think I said that when we talked about this initially, that I expected we were going to hear from other neighborhoods about this same thing.
Yeah, yeah, well, we had our first one.
Luckily, it was you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Do we have a request to speak?
You do.
And that is from?
You have one request to speak from Loretta Hedinger. Okay, all right, thank you. We'll call you back on number 10.
Okay, so a motion will be in order.
I'll move approval of ordinance number 1331.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
All right, item number 10 is Resolution Number 10920, a resolution. a resolution establishing a residential permit parking zone in the historic district.
Thank you. On this item, so this would be the first implementation of the ordinance that you've just approved to establish the first residential permit parking zone. It would be very largely mirroring what was done for the pilot program that was recently completed. As you recall, at the last council meeting where we discussed this item, we went into the details of how this permit zone would be implemented. We got down into, you know, what times, what the cost of fees would be, approval process, the boundaries, numbers of permits and placards that would be issued. And this council gave staff direction on what you felt would be most appropriate for this initial permit zone. I attended that September 12th meeting with Historic Folsom Residents Association, explained what the council had recommended. They largely supported the council's recommendation, but there were three areas that they asked for some consideration. And those were, first off, with the approval threshold. Initially, we had recommended a two-thirds majority of all residents or property owners within the affected permit zone would have to approve of the program before we'd move forward. The residents felt that that was an onerous and possibly impossible to achieve threshold, to get two-thirds of all affected residents to, one, even vote on it, and two, you know, to vote in favor of it. Their counter-suggestion would be to go with a simple majority, 50% plus one, and only of respondents. And I believe they also had requested that those be mailed to the property owners, that the property owner should decide what happens to their property within this zone. But that if they don't respond, they had their chance. It's just like any normal general vote, you know, you have the opportunity to vote, but it's only the votes that count or that are submitted that would be tallied up. And of those submitted votes, they are saying, "Just get a simple majority." So that was their proposal on the approval threshold. With respect to permit cost and duration, this council had suggested $50 for a two-year period. They felt just go with $25 per permit on a one-year basis. It's essentially the same cost, but it creates a little more flexibility. And then lastly, the permitted area, they wanted to consider expanding it to include the 500 block of Figueroa Street. I did receive just this morning, they did a very informal, you know, door-to-door survey...
Of whoever happened to be home.
Of whoever happened to be home, exactly. And in fact, to that point, they claimed that they received five in support, one strongly opposed, one mostly opposed, one ambivalent, and five they couldn't make contact with. And I acknowledged that they did this work, appreciated it, but I told them, "Well, we're going to call this a straw man poll or a straw poll. The city will do our own outreach in a more official balloting." But again, you know, based on what this council's direction is in terms of approval threshold, we will apply it to the city's ballot that we sent out. And then lastly, you did receive some additional comment from Mr. Delp on a very similar to what the Residents Association recommended with some nuances to it. And those are provided to you. And then lastly, we did receive word just today that there may be some issues and some concerns from some of the merchants on the Sutter Street blocks, primarily the 700 block, that may or may not be associated with the permit parking. But perhaps I can ask Vice Mayor Rodriguez to elaborate a little bit on the concerns that you've heard.
Yeah, I actually was going to ask that we continue this resolution until we can get some conversations going with the merchants on the 700 block, the Historic District Resident Association, and the Historic District Merchant Association. Because there are some concerns just about foot traffic, you know, the impact, maybe an adverse impact that this may or may not have had on businesses on the 700 block. Many, some, a few discussions took place of how the 700 block used to be busy, you know, between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. And right now, one of my, one of the business owners that owns two restaurants on the block said it's kind of a ghost town. Another business owner had concerns about it just having, being slow. And again, it can or cannot be impacted by this. So I think that if we can just hold off from making a decision on this item until some discussion can take place between the actual merchants, not just the merchants that are on the Board of Directors for the Merchant Association, but the actual business owners, so that we can get just a discussion going.
Okay, I'm happy to move this to the next meeting, but I want that meeting to take place within the next two weeks.
Yeah. Hold on a second. There was a meeting taking place...
This is deserving of them to set up a special meeting.
October... There's a meeting that's taking place October 12th, which is...
Our next meeting, our meeting's October 11th.
11th, yeah.
So Vice Mayor Rodriguez, were they implying that their business was affected by the pilot program?
No, I think the discussion is something is obviously taking place in the historic district that are just some concerns, and I think a conversation needs to take place just about, I think, traffic, maybe even comparing last year to this year. What are some factors that can be impacting business on Friday and Saturday nights? I think just a discussion has to take place. I don't think it can happen before the next meeting, maybe the meeting at the second meeting in October. Is there a reason why it would, you would want it the first meeting in October?
So that we can get this over with. We've been having this conversation for three years.
Okay.
The residents want to get this done. And I guess my only concern is that if those other business owners in the 700 block, whether they are or not on the board of the Merchants Association, I'm just surprised that they're waiting till now to get involved in this conversation.
Well, it was just a conversation that started, that actually started within the last few days. And so I think a discussion should take place. But it has not been three years, Carrie. I think that...
I didn't say three, I said two.
Oh, okay. So...
Parking in the historic district has been under discussion for about 15, but that's another old story.
Yeah, no, I know. So anyways, if we could just hold off maybe to the second meeting in October so that the Merchant Association meeting on the 12th can take place, and then maybe just some conversations, and it's just conversations with the actual business owners, the Merchant Association, and the residents.
Do we have a consensus to continue this to October 25th?
Well, so Mark...
And does that affect the ordinance?
Technically, the pilot is over, but the signs are still up, right? So somebody could be cited if they were parked there without a permit, or no?
No, the signs are still up, but because the permit, the pilot program was only authorized for six months, they are basically defunct at this point.
Got it, okay.
And to answer the question that the mayor posed, continuing the resolution has no impact on the ordinance, on your vote on the ordinance. So if you, if there's a consensus of the council to allow more time for those conversations, we can certainly do that.
Can we hear from the public first?
Yes, we do have, we have two requests to speak.
It feels like there's, Mark, before you go, the time to actually have the election to determine whether or not there will be a program, what's that going to be? Because we could be going on parallel tracks here, potentially.
Well, you know, we do need to know what the approval threshold is, because right now, as it stands, it's the 67% of all property owners. And, or there's the suggestion from the residents that is much more forgiving. We'll need to know that. We can start the process, we can draft up the ballot and figure out the mailing list. So we can, we can work somewhat concurrently on this, but at some point, we do need to know...
And I think the real issue is actually going to, the real issue's not going to have anything to do with this. It's going to have to do with the boundaries, right?
Could be.
I think that's the whole point, if they're talking about the 500 block.
We just want to have a conversation. I think a conversation has to take place.
But I don't think that the merchants are going to care about the 67% versus simple majority. All they're going to care about, in I would expect, is what the boundaries are going to be. So that's kind of a separate issue from this stuff. So I'm just going to, I'll do a straw poll. Where are you all, starting with Rosario? Are you happy to go from two-thirds to a simple majority?
Madam Mayor, if I may interject, I believe Madam Vice Mayor should recuse herself at this time.
Okay.
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, so YK, are you okay with a simple majority instead of two-thirds?
As a part of the merchants' meeting, are we gathering this information or not, that kind of information?
I have no information on how the Merchants Association meeting will go or what the discussion will be. This is more focused on what the affected residents and property owners within the permit boundary, how many of them would approve of a permit parking program.
And the merchants, YK, that are on, they're likely to be leaseholders, they may be owners, but they're not residents. So they won't be included in that vote anyway?
Yeah. It's just I'm looking for inputs, you know, taking inputs from the user community and the residents community, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor Howell, one possibility may be a revisiting of the times that the permits are in effect. You know, what was suggested there is that the dinner period is affecting the merchants, perhaps.
Okay.
It's possible, if you'll recall, that what the residents' primary concern was, was the late-night parking, the people leaving the bars, or the employees returning to the vehicles that were parked in their area and disrupting their quality of life and their sleep and whatnot. So it's possible that this discussion can lead towards a nuancing of the start of the permit time period.
But I was only trying to focus on the things that came up at the recent Residents Association, and that was the two-thirds versus simple majority and the cost. Those were the only things I wanted to get the straw poll.
The only reason I bring it up, Madam Mayor, is that it could change people's voting if we're coming back and saying that the time limits have changed, and perhaps, you know, that might alter their opinion. That's the only reason I wanted to bring that up.
Carrie, if you want to start down here, I'm fine with the $25 a year. I am not fine with a simple majority. I think it needs to be, I'm fine with it. The ballot only goes to the property owner, and that 67% of the people who respond have to approve, you know? But I think it needs to be a higher threshold than a simple majority, because substitute anything else, sidewalks, speed bumps, I mean, you know, it's contentious things. And to say, "Oh, you know, half the people want it, so we're going to do it," that is not compelling enough, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. And, but you're okay, Sarah, with the $25 a year? How much more work is that for you guys if you have to do it annually?
Right.
Because that was the whole reason for doing the $50 in two years.
It's really hard to say right now. As you recall, when we were talking about this last month, I committed that I will be back before you in a year and give you a true reckoning of how much time and cost that this program generates for the city, so...
Yeah.
Well, and as a follow-up to my comment from earlier, I don't mind starting out with a one-year.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we haven't opened a can of worms here.
Okay. Mike, where are you?
I was the one that suggested that we do two years in order to reduce the burden on the staff. So I'm a little frustrated that that's being reconsidered, but that's not the hill I want to die on. The threshold should be higher and of everyone that responds. If people fail to respond, then they've lost their opportunity to vote. But yeah, it should be a clear majority.
Yeah, and I agree, I agree on the majority, and I'm with Mike. I would prefer the two-year. That was the whole reason for doing it, was to cut down on the amount of staff time and pay for the amount of staff that's going to be required to do this. And I, you know, and property, the other weird thing is that property doesn't turn over very quickly down there. So I don't know why anybody would be opposed to a two-year thing, and frankly, it's a savings on the part of the person that lives there to not have to do it every year. So my inclination would be to leave it 50 for two years.
That's just a recommendation you got from the HDC meeting when you attended last...
The Residents Association, sorry.
Oh, HFA. No, I'm good with the two years and the 67%, what it stands right now.
Okay, so...
Madam Mayor, may I suggest a motion to continue this item?
Yes. Anybody want to make that motion? Oh, sorry, we have two people from the public that want to speak.
Okay, so our first speaker tonight will be Loretta Hedinger. Loretta will be followed by Mike Reynolds. You want to come on down, Loretta? Once you start, I'll start the three-minute timer, and you'll see the little monitor in front of you to give you a warning when you're close.
I think I will be quick.
Okay.
First, I want to thank you all for moving forward on something related to the long-term parking needs for the historic district. And with regard to the issues that you're working on now, I want to interject one other possibility that might affect the vote of the residents. And that is the concern about enforcement. And I think that that might affect whether someone would be willing to pay $25 for a year to see if the city will enforce it versus paying $50 to throw away their $50. So that's just a possibility. As you know, I don't live there, so I'm not the be-all and end-all on those opinions. But I could suggest one way that this all could be much less of an issue. And that would be, of course, I'm playing my same song again. That would be for you to get serious about funding a parking structure to address all the needs for the 600 block end of Sutter Street. And, you know, it could be as simple, simple, as directing the staff to seriously work on proposals to bring to your attention. And I know that you would find all sorts of support and help in both residents and merchants to actually create a permanent solution. And I know that we're in a situation now where that bill just passed, but that, what that bill does is drop it right in your laps. It doesn't absolve you from the parking needs. And so I would hope that we would be hearing good news on that topic. If you want to convert a parking structure to housing in the future, Mike probably is familiar with this, but if you'll build one that is level instead of a spiral, it's easier to convert to housing. And I left 25 seconds on the table.
Thanks, Loretta.
Next will be Mike Reynolds. I'll start the three minutes when you do.
Thank you, council and Madam Mayor. As usual, I will fill it in with a couple of overviews and then some data that maybe will try and set the record straight on a couple of these things. So number one, you know, as noted, we've been working on this for about 18 months, and the pilot, you know, had a full six months. It's a little concerning that at 11th hour, there is some data that shows up, given the longevity that existed in that respect, right? Because there would have been ample opportunity for that to percolate its way up through the various associations, the merchants, and FHDA, if it were truly problematic. And in our informal scans along the way, that never happened. In addition to that, I'm a little concerned about, let's gather data, because that's a very ambiguous sort of problem statement. And deriving correlatory effect to what data they throw out relative to what it means for parking seems to me to be a little ambiguous. So if, in fact, this is moved out, what the data is that's being collected and why it's driven by the pilot should be crystal clear, because otherwise, you could just send this into a rat hole and we never actually get to resolution. The other...
No, we're going to get to resolution by the 25th.
Okay, but even still, right? Okay, that's fine. And so then, the last piece, we talked about it when we did the parking before, that the idea was to create a clearer problem statement around product or parking management. So by blocking off the streets, the idea was to move it. And so while helping the residents, you know, has caused a bit of a dislocation... And so while helping the residents, you know, has caused a bit of a dislocation, I might offer an alternative hypothesis, which is the blockage of the 700 block. You know, when we were talking about this holistically, of all the things we needed to do, if you are moving northbound on Riley or anywhere on that side, you do not have the ability to move to the parking garage unless you know the streets through the historic district, because you can't turn left on Friday nights on Sutter Street and you can't turn left on Liedersdorf. And so if, in fact, the 700 block is being impacted in any way, it would likely be more attributed to that. And we have said, okay, we need better wayfinding signage. There was ARPA money appropriated to that. Could that be accelerated? Traffic flow studies, Mark and I had informally talked about, could he and Zach look at how do we want to move the traffic? And then lastly, if, in fact, the data, and at the time, Rosario shared that data, that was her restaurant specifically, that is the only autonomous restaurant on the street. The others are all bars, and I don't think I've heard anything that any bar is having issues with revenue streams. So if, in fact, that's true, that data should be blown out and trended across the start date of the pilot. And if others are fellow travelers, then FHDA and that association should look at how do they get people to the place it needs to be. But I would struggle to believe the driver of reduced revenue came from blocking off parking on Figueroa. So that's just my sort of overall, that I know Rosario had an issue, but I think if there are other merchants, they should be explicitly said, who brought that data? The ambiguity of it allows for generalizations and stuff. So let's, let's get the facts on the table and then decide. But my vote would be 18 months of this, we've had the pilot, the data's clear. My recommendation is residents would like this to go forward. Let's move it forward and not wait till the 28th, till the next block. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else from the public? Any more questions of Mark? Do we have a motion to?
I may, Madam Mayor, I can suggest some edits to the resolution.
Okay.
Consistent with the, the direction you've given us. So looking at, at proposed Resolution 10920, the first, be it further resolved, would be modified to read, at a minimum of 67% of property owners, strike the word residents. And then the fourth, be it further resolved, would be modified to say, that additional parking permits may be purchased if the property owner, strike the word residents, provides proof of additional vehicles, strike the word permitted. And that would be consistent with the direction that you just provided to staff.
So basically, that would mean that any tenants would have to go through their landlord to get this taken care of?
To receive a permit, yes.
That's probably not a bad idea for a completely different set of reasons, but.
If I may, Madam Mayor, and we can facilitate to make the process easier by allowing the property owner to provide authorization.
Okay.
To the tenant, yeah.
Anybody have a problem with any of what Mark just suggested?
No. And, and as I've been muddling this over, the, the, the one-year for 25 or two-years for 50, maybe both options should be available to people.
I don't, I don't want to do that. I don't, I don't want to have, I don't want to split the baby on this. I think it's, again, this is all about the fact that this is gonna be a significant amount of work and effort on staff to get this rolling, and I, I don't want to just increase the number of options. And, and again, I think there's gonna be very few people that are, you know, gonna move in the middle of this, and I really don't think that a difference in $25 is, is gonna matter to very many people down there.
It came up at the meeting. And the majority, that's one of the items that came up at the meeting. You, you reported to us.
It was one of the items that was brought up. I can't say how many people supported it, but it was just one of the things I needed to report out to you.
Okay, my, my inclination is to leave it at 50, and I think all four of us initially said that, so. For two-years. So you?
Okay.
You're gonna be okay? All right.
Yeah.
So we, so we still need a motion to, to move this to the 25th?
Yeah, I personally don't want to move this to 25th. I'd rather call the question now with those edits, because I think to the point that was just made, we have spent a good long time talking about this, crafting it and studying it. And having, you know, things come up at the last minute is, it, it's, it's based on some hypotheticals that may or may not have, may or may not have anything to do with the program that was piloted.
And again.
And I just don't see a reason why we can, we can't move forward on both things, because we need to pass the ordinance to be able to ask the residents if they want to actually implement it. That's gonna take some time. In the meantime, if the, the business owners and FHDA find that they have a compelling reason to try and convince their neighbors to not vote for it, they'll get that opportunity.
Well, and I kind of echo that, because I was just pulling up who was on the ad hoc parking committee. There were three FHDA members on the ad hoc parking committee. One of the recommendations that came out of that committee, which was designated as short-term, high priority, is design, implement, and enforce a residential parking permit program.
Yeah, so.
And I'm, again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that at the 11th hour, you know, basically two-years in, we now have merchants that are, that are questioning this. Why, I'd like to think that if I owned a business on Sutter Street, I would have been all over this right from the get-go. So it surprises me that, that they weren't involved in these discussions all along.
We all have enormous respect for the business owners down there. It's just that this, this needs to move forward. And my, my motion would be to call the question and approve Resolution 10920.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
With the amendments that were suggested.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, and merchants will have an opportunity to come, and in case we have to make an addendum or amendments, we can always look into those ones, right?
Yes.
If there is a compelling reason and info.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Chalamchala. This is exactly why we structured the ordinance to be so flexible for the council to be able to make adjustments.
Yeah.
Should situations change.
Exactly, yeah. I third it.
It's not really a thing, but.
I've done it before, so good on you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that takes you to your last item this evening. This is new business item number 11, ordinance number 1333, an ordinance removing limitations on frequency of garage sales by repealing Section 5.09.020 of the Folsom Municipal Code. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Good evening, Krista, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, give me one second, Pam, let me raise your volume up a little bit. Okay, Pam, go ahead, let's try that again.
Great, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And I'm sorry, I'm not in the chambers with you this evening. This current garage sale limits that are on the, in the municipal code now were established in 1997, which limited the garage sales to three consecutive days twice a year, essentially, for every property. As part of the local emergency orders for COVID, City Council stopped enforcement of garage sale limitations for a variety of reasons. And as part of your discussion at the last meeting on September 13th to terminate the local emergency order, Council directed staff to permanently remove the limitation on garage sales as unnecessary. The ordinance 1333 does just that. It removes the Section 5.09.020 from the municipal code, leaving other definitions and restrictions relative to signage and things like that for garage sales. We did get one comment from Mr. Delp requesting that we not change the limitations as reasonable to protect against potential nuisances. You know, from a code enforcement perspective, we have not had many complaints over time and none over the last two-year period. This is something that, where you may have issues with people doing sales or accumulating materials or goods in yard areas. There are other enforcement mechanisms throughout the municipal code, including maintenance of private-owned properties visible from public, public property and home occupation regulations. And so from a staff perspective, we are not concerned about amending this to, to eliminate the, the limitations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Pam? No, I don't have one. Okay. Do we have any requests to speak from the public on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay.
I will move adoption of Resolution Number One, no, or what is this?
Ordinance.
You're introducing ordinance 1333.
Thank you, I'll do that, Krista.
I'll second.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah. You did, Rosario.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Which moves us to City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you will all join me in welcoming our new library director, who is actually here with us tonight out in the audience, Tom Gruenison. Tom brings 12 years of library management and operations experience to the position, including 10 years at the Sacramento Public Library. He most recently served as the Sacramento Public Library's Regional Systems Supervisor, and he's also managed the Orangevale and Fair Oaks branches of that system. Tom is already making a very favorable impression. I sent him a note today that it's his second day on the job, and I had five comments today, I already love Tom. So he's off to a great start, and then more good news.
We need to sell T-shirts as a fundraiser for the library. I heart Tom.
Yes, and just as lovable is Allison Garcia, who is also in the chamber, who I have just promoted from Human Resources Manager to Human Resources Director, a very well-earned promotion. Allison first joined the city in 2021, although it feels like she's been with us much longer, and she oversees recruitment, hiring, labor relations, and policy development for the city. She was instrumental in the contracts that we've been bringing to the City Council recently, and she brings 20 years of human resources experience to the city. So please congratulate Allison on her promotion as well. I'd like to share that the Folsom Police Department will host National Coffee with a Cop Day on October 5th from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at Chocolate Fish Coffee Roasters on Blue Ravine Road. And officers will be there to have a cup of coffee and answer questions and catch up with residents, so please feel free to stop by and say hello. And my favorite event, or one of my favorite city events is back. The Steve Miklos Aquatic Center will host the Barkin Splash Dog Swim Event from 1:00 to 4:00 PM on Saturday, October 1st. The entry fee is $10 per dog, and as always, human companions are free. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Rosario?
I do, I just have one. There's a Relay for Life this weekend, this Saturday and Sunday, October 1st and 2nd, supporting the American Cancer Association at Sutter Middle School. It is, they will have vendors, craft bear, and all that good stuff.
YK? My is the recently Community Service Day. Now, that's a, a big, awesome success, you know. Thank you again for PAX and REC team for going extra mile and pulling that big event. I think it is over 2,000 people, where we were going through project to project, even though that many people didn't show up to the church, but they are at the projects. I was asking, and we were collecting so many disclosure waiver forms for our city attorney, we want to make sure we give him all those, right? It's important. You know, now and then, from few people, we do get, you know, it's a once in a year, anything we can do similar in a small scale. That request is consistently coming from the, you know, residents. You know, they're all energetic and they're very happy after spending three to four hours, and they always think about if there could have been more like that with the city. Then I said, you know, to my colleagues, my volunteers, push them through the volunteer opportunities on our city website. We do have opportunities there. So once again, huge thanks to PAX and REC and Elaine, you know, awesome job from our team again, one more time.
Yeah, great, great team, great steering committee. And I did want to point out, I believe at your next council meeting, there will be a recap of Community Service Day, so you'll get to hear all the wonderful things that were achieved, all the metrics, so it's great.
Awesome, awesome. And in our last two-by-two, School Board and City Council Members Meeting, Mike and I, you know, it went very well, and we touched on one small item, you know, how do we beautify the Priory City Road off-ramp when you get into the city next to the Intel on that side? You know, the school side, I think it needs some, you know, facelift. So I think School Board is agreeing. Hopefully, we will be talking that one in our next meeting. But the other important one, which we discussed, I think our both chiefs are there, how can we give the taste of public safety firefighters and police officers, you know, the, the educational way navigating them through those professions? We always have a shot officers and firefighters as well. You know, Mike and I put that on them, and I think they're going to be seriously thinking about it and see how we can start that mindset of our juniors and seniors, think towards public safety is also a great option for them, great career. So that's a good one, I think we're going to push through it. And last Sunday, I think I visited Citrus Heights 25th Anniversary, or, you know, they're celebrating. That's a cool thing, I've never been to that one, and this is my first time. The one thing I, which I really like it, which probably I can share with all of you the link, they have a community in neighborhood districts, which like, you know, very interesting to me. The entire city was broken down into nine districts, and it is run by the community, and they do everything in coordination with the city. It seems to be very interesting to me. I think there may be some opportunity, we can bring some good from that program. How, I don't know, please. I'll, I'll share the links and see how, you know, we can look after it. And they were all very happy as well. The other one is, you know, a Coffee with Cop. Chief, thank you so much, you know. People always look for those kind of things, and thank you for putting Sergeant G there. You know, he's, he's a perfect person for that one, and I'm promoting that one as well. With that, thank you very much, and good evening, Folsom.
Sarah? Mike?
Tom, welcome, Allison, congratulations.
Yeah.
It's a great time to be a high school football fan in Folsom. Vista del Lago steamrolled somebody on Friday, and Folsom High got over on De La Sal.
At Concord.
At De La Sal. So I would suggest that there's no better time to go to a high school football game than this year in Folsom. So get out there and support our local Eagles and Bulldogs. The Muslim Center that is near Lakeside Church is having an open house this Saturday, so from 10:00 to 3:00. If you want to come, join me, I will be there early in the morning. I am, I also get the high honor of delivering an Eagle Scout Award or a, a resolution for an Eagle Scout this, this Sunday. And then I wanted to just thank the, the Choose Folsom Group, which is our Tourism Board through the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the Choose Folsom event this past Thursday. It was very, very informative in terms of, we had an economist give us a, a full download on the wackiness of our current economic situation in terms of there being incredible demand for goods and really high inflation, which usually those two things go together, but it's only happening in certain segments of the market. So the overall impact on people's ability to spend money has not quite caught up with their ambition yet, so more to come on that. And there were a bunch of interesting projects that were announced. Each of the hospital companies in California is really wanting to have a hospital here in Folsom, or some medical office buildings at least, so we got an update on Dignity's project, on UC Davis's project. And I think there was an update on Kaiser's project as well. So we, we've got all kinds of opportunities for healthcare coming down the road. And lastly, we had the announcement of a private group that is interested in building a multipurpose sports facility that would include a, a couple of sheets of ice for hockey and ice skating, which is super exciting to my hockey player brain, so.
Actually, that would be a few, it's three.
A few, yeah, I get to, I get to get my, my hockey bag out if that one comes to fruition. So more to come on that, there's many hurdles in front of a project like that, but it was, it was announced that it's attempting to come our way. So thank you very much to everybody involved in that, and that's all for tonight.
The only clarification on that is that we did get, at Future Folsom on Thursday, we did get a presentation from UC Davis and from Dignity Health. But the Kaiser was actually, they made a public announcement today in Business Journal, to be in a couple of other locations, that they're in the process of moving forward with submitting plans to the city to build on their property behind Palladio. And kind of surprisingly, they don't yet seem to have approval from their own board. So I hope that's gonna be a slam dunk so that they can move forward as well. Because I know a lot of people in Folsom have been waiting and waiting and waiting very impatiently for Kaiser to have some more facilities here in Folsom, so everyone doesn't have to go to road. so everyone doesn't have to go to Roseville. So that hopefully is going to happen as well.
And Kaiser did turn in their entitlements package yesterday to our Community Development Department. So that was exciting.
Okay. Everything is good at Regional SAN, at RT, and the Connector is still moving along. Our project is moving forward. And do we know, Mark, when the lights are going to be installed at East Bidwell and White Rock? Or operable?
I'm going to have to get back to you after I speak with Mr. Reed about that. I'll send an update to the whole council.
Okay, that would be great. And I know some of, some of the council members, and I know, Sarah, I saw something that you posted on, on social media about the lack of striping and the difficulty in determining where the actual lanes are along Iron Point and a couple of other locations. So Elaine did some checking. She sent us an email this afternoon. I talked to Mark this morning, suggested that if the striping contractor was having such difficulty in actually getting out there, that the general might want to contact somebody else and see if that would speed, speed things up. And I don't know what magic you worked today, but it looks like they're going to be out there like next week.
Yep, it'll be done early next week. There were just some, just some complications with the subcontractor that were unanticipated, but all is on track for early next week.
That is excellent because that is a, I mean, you can't even, you can't see the pop-ups even in the daytime, let alone at night. So thanks for getting that resolved finally. The usual, usual traffic warnings, I don't know how many people. I actually had someone pass me on Montrose the other day. Residential neighborhood, passed me on Montrose, headed toward, you know, going toward Blanchmere School. So the car that passed me not only passed me on Montrose, and this was an adult, it wasn't a kid, then blew through four stop signs right near the school. So, you know, this is completely unacceptable. And, you know, people that are complaining about other people speeding and running stop signs or rolling through stop signs, everybody's doing it. So, you know, please, if you, if you're doing it or not fully stopping, please stop doing it. It's setting a bad example for the people behind you, your children that might be in the car. And, you know, if you really, really needed to be there that quickly, you should have left 10 minutes ago. And I, and I do, I was remiss at the last meeting in not clarifying what had happened with the City Manager's contract. There was no need for us to bring that back to the council because Elaine basically in advance refused to accept any kind of a change to her contract, meaning that she is not getting a raise. And she made that offer in consideration of the finances of the city's future, which was a, you know, many long conversations in the five meetings we had on the budget. So with that, I will say good night. Oh, just two more things. Next Thursday, October 6th, there will be a 30th, 30th anniversary celebration of Powerhouse Ministries. So if people are interested in that, you can contact Powerhouse directly. And that is also the same night, it will also be the 30th anniversary for Visconti's Restaurant. At the restaurant. So if anybody's available on Thursday night to be heading to multiple celebrations, have fun. With that, we are adjourned at 8:03.